Was put that in the state budget to support that, those programs.
So you mentioned New Hampshire, does New Hampshire cover methadone?
Uh, I can't answer that question.
Thank you.
But I can get the answer for you.
That would, that would be good. Matter of fact, I, for the work session, if we could have an idea of what states cover methadone as part of the Medicaid program and which states don't, that might be helpful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. But I see, oh, I just saw it, Senator Casey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is for you and actually anybody else who's, we could come up and talk about the section 65 issues about, about the rate of reimbursement. And I appreciate the fact that any cut that's going to affect those institutions, but I'm struck by the Commissioner's testimony that our rates are considerably higher than other rates in Windham. And maybe there are some other factors that make that different for us, but the first thing I see is we're paying way more than everybody else. So if that's not so, I'd like to hear from folks, if there's a reason why there's a difference that can be explained, just why it needs to be more. I'd like, I'm sure others would like to hear that.
And I, and I think that you actually had a very good question for the Commissioner asking about the low rates and the fact, were there other supported pieces that allowed agencies, for instance, to have, to accept a lower rate of reimbursement, reimbursement, because it was grant dollars or funding dollars in order to do that? So, and I can, but I can tell you that other private insurance companies pay a lot more than what the main care rate is.
Sure, that's, that's so, as it is, there's lots of things you know to care about.
Correct.
But seeing those numbers, at least for one person, I think your burden proof is on those who want to justify the continued rate to show us where there are other funding sources that make the, this not an apples to apples comparison.
Yeah, I think it's a very good question that you had, and, and I look forward to seeing the answers, because I run a small outpatient service, and trust me, I run on a wing and a prayer. And one more cut, I, I, I can't sustain, particularly where I, we lost so many clients that are not insured, so they have to go on our sliding skill fee. And so I, we're struggling to keep afloat. And we've been in business for a long time, and this is the roughest year we have seen. So tend to take it really close.
I think you're very good on that, Karen.
We sure do. Wellspring runs a residential treatment program. We have a 15-bed facility for residential care in prior, pregnant women who are pregnant.
And I was wondering whether you have any experience around the use of Suboxone or methadone for pregnant women, and whether, if you were somebody who was coming up, might be able to speak to that.
I can tell you that the clients that we've had in, in our residential program that have been pregnant and been on Suboxone or methadone have had very successful pregnancies and been able to, I can think of a couple of young women, very successful long-term recovery with very healthy babies. One of them I can vision in my head, it's an adorable child. So there's been lots of success in regards to pregnant women on Suboxone and methadone. I'm sure the methadone clinics will have more statistics than I do. I can tell you that Wellspring has had an enormous amount of success with pregnant women and babies being born, who are able to have no lifetime disabilities and being able to be wonderful little children.
Thank you.
Very quickly, you referenced the fact that it's weighed a burden on you because of the change in eligibility for main care recipients. And I'm sure that's true for others in the audience. So my understanding is it is putting significant financial burden on you, in addition to stress with the passive changes that are occurring.
Correct. For, for people who work in addictions, you need to understand that clients, most of the time when they have an addiction, are not considered disabled. So they are not able to be on the rolls of Medicaid because they're not disabled. They're ill people who need treatment, but they're not. They're not eligible, they're the gap, they're not eligible for the exchanges because they have no income. And they have no income because they're too ill currently to work. Our job is to get them physically, emotionally, and on that road to recovery, so they're able to get a job and then get on the exchanges. But for our clients, they fall right smack in that middle, in the gap, where they can't get on the exchanges and they, they are not disabled, so they can't get on main care. Many of those clients are your correctional clients, and particularly what we discovered this year, we're women who lose custody of their children. They have no coverage once they lose the custody of their child, and unless the department has court ordered them to treatment and the department pays, which is wonderful, but if they don't have that involvement, they have no, no way to pay for treatment, which is a huge barrier to treatment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell.
You're welcome. And Representative Gutten, I have your questions written. I'll make sure that MACAP responds to improving treatment and how to engage and encourage clients with, who need treatment who don't see it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bruce Campbell and Dale Hamilton and Kenny Miller, Andrew Chaney. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. To the chairs and members of the committees, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Bruce Campbell. I'm a man in long-term recovery and a proud member of the Bangor area recovery network. We are, in a word, experts in recovery. We define recovery as a process of change that leads to excellence and improved health, wellness, and quality of life. The four pillars of VARN's foundation are that we believe that recovery is a process. There are many pathways to recovery. Recovery overcomes shame and stigma, and that supporting recovery is a community responsibility. We receive no state or federal funding, but we do have something to say about how the state of Maine is spending its money on the war on drugs. Last year, Governor LePage released a study that showed the annual economic impact of substance abuse totaled $1.4 billion in 2010, over $1,000 per year for every man, woman, and child in the state of Maine. That is outrageous. Treatment may begin in a clinic, but recovery happens in the community. People starting their journey to recovery have no voice in this discussion. This is about stigma, plain and simple. People say they don't have a disease, they brought it on themselves. Perhaps the only person more stigmatized than a drug addict is someone who's seeking treatment at a methadone clinic. We would rather point our fingers and blame than see the truth. The truth is that recovery can, will, and does happen. At the VARN, we see it every day. This is a simple case of supply and demand. Like alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana, profits do not come from casual users. Profits are made from those who become addicted. Treating addicted addiction is bad business for drug dealers. What is most outrageous in the report is the fact that only 3% of those costs went to substance abuse prevention and treatment. For the $1,000 borne by every man, woman, and child in this state, Maine invests $30 in prevention and treatment. $30. Now, all of you know someone who's in trouble with alcohol and drugs. Studies show that for every $1 that is invested in treatment, there are $7 saved in criminal justice, healthcare, and social service costs. Methadone treatment alone saves more Medicaid expenditures than any other type of substance abuse treatment, an estimated $240 per month. In Maine, over 15,000 years of life are lost each year to substance abuse. Mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers tell me that their loved ones are doing well now, but when they began their journey to recovery, it was the clinics that saved their lives. People will die if these cuts aren't restored. I hope we will never have to look into the eyes of these mothers and fathers and tell them that their kids weren't worth it, that it was more important to make another arrest and a headline than to simply make the help available to them when they needed it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Dale Hamilton and Kenny Miller and Andrew Chaney and Jennifer Miller. Welcome.
Senator Hamper, Senator Brackey, Representative Rotundo, Representative Gutten, and distinguished members of the Joint Committees, my name is Dale Hamilton. I'm the Executive Director of Community Health and Counseling Services. We provide home health, hospice, and mental health services in the state. And I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed rate reductions in section 65. I'm going to start to read my testimony, but then I'm going to go off-script, which always gets me in trouble, but I want to respond to some of the things that kind of, I want to begin by sharing me with my confusion about the Department of Health and Human Services' proposal for, for these rate reductions. I'm sure that you all heard the initiatives that the Department has been pursuing to improve health com, health outcomes and lower cost. I'm also sure that you've heard about the $35 million CMS state innovation model SIM grant that the Department is administering, which aligns and supports these goals. And these initiatives should be applauded, they are the right thing to be doing. The improving integration of behavioral and physical healthcare services, one of the focal points of all of these initiatives. It is therefore perplexing as to why the Department would propose such impactful reductions on the very system they have identified as being integral to achieving better health outcomes and lowering costs. To be very direct and clear, these proposals are in direct contradiction to these initiatives. The impact on these reductions will be significant, and they will have a detrimental impact on children and adults who need and utilize these services. And I want to, one of the things that I know is always a question, and I think speaks to the question that was raised a minute, I'm not up here to talk about how do we preserve the organization that I oversee or any other organization. I'm here to talk about how do we preserve the services that are provided to some of our most vulnerable citizens. And our organizations are the vehicle of which that happens. And so when, when I heard some of the things that came up today in psychiatry, I want to talk about the medication management in detail, it's a 58% reduction. And the, the quote was that the only difference between section 65 medication management and section 90 is the setting. That, I respectfully disagree, that is not the case. When you look at what the requirements are under section 65, all section 65 services must be approved by the Department through a contract with APS. There are also additional mental health licensing requirements. The rigor under which those services are delivered are more intense, and there are more costs associated with that. I also, I don't have this information, it's a question that, that I'd be interested in, is how much psychiatry services are delivered under section 90? Section 90 is a comprehensive service with a lot of medical services, a physician's service, and I'd be interested in knowing how that compares to the volume of services being delivered under section 65. The, the cost piece, taking out all overhead and then putting that issue aside about organizations, under the proposed rates, what happens in psychiatry? A psychiatrist delivering 40 hours of service per week, that's their, every, the only thing that they do, generating a billable service, at that rate, the rate would not cover their salary and fringe costs, not including any kind of overhead. That's the reality, that's very specific. And when you look at the other rates and their development, I realize that if we're bringing in some other states, I think questions are demographics, are the demographics the same? But also look at our history. When we look back, our rates for medication management were standardized in 2011. The outpatient rate, counseling therapy rate that's being proposed for reduction was established 2007 at 86/77, 2011 was reduced to 84. It's been stagnant since, there have been no increases, but there have been also lots of costs. So, and all of these rates, same thing. We've absorbed those costs, year by year. We run our organizations, we find a way to deliver the services. These kind of cuts are dramatic, and they will eliminate services, it will eliminate access. Their primary care is not the resource for medication management services. It's a specialized service, and it cannot be picked up in that setting. So I have lots of concerns, I know my time is up, and that's what happens when you go off-script.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. We appreciate it. Next is Mr. Chaney. And, and I do want to say to people who are in, in this room or downstairs in the Welcome Center, if you listen long, I don't expect you to stay for, for long periods of time without getting up and getting coffee or whatever, if your name should be called when we are not in the room, we will circle back to you. So please don't feel that you're going to lose your place if you are not in the room when your name is called. We'll make sure you get circled back to you, don't go to the end of the room. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Hamper, Senator Brackey, Representative Rotundo, Representative Gutten, and other esteemed members of the Joint Standing Committees. My name is Kenny Miller, and I'm the Executive Director of the Down East AIDS Network and the Health Equity Alliance, and a co-founding member, member of the Maine Harm Reduction Alliance. And I'm here today in opposition to the biennial budget proposal that would strip main care funding for methadone. The Maine Harm Reduction Alliance, my agency, support and deliver cutting-edge harm reduction programming for people actively struggling with addictions throughout Maine. We provide syringe exchange services, drug overdose prevention education, and HIV and hepatitis C screening. We offer kindness, respect, guidance, and encouragement. Frequently, we're catching people before they enter the recovery process. We are there when people are ready to take their first steps towards recovery. We link them to treatment providers, and frequently, we hear from them the amazing difference that methadone has made in their lives. Take a young woman that I recently tested for hepatitis C, we'll call her Jenny. From a family where trauma and drug use were a fact of everyday life, Jenny started taking drugs at an early age. When I met her, she was in her late twenties, with a five-year-old daughter that had a winning personality, and she was enrolled in a methadone clinic. The counseling and treatment that Jenny received at her local clinic empowered her to break with her family and free herself from the toxic environment that enslaved her to drugs in the first place. It enabled her to stop using. Methadone changed her life, but not just her life, methadone changed her daughter's life. The reason Jenny had undertaken recovery in the first place was her daughter, because she did not want to give her little girl the life that she'd had in the childhood that she'd lost. By stripping main care funding for methadone, we would effectively be making the most studied and effective form of opioid addiction treatment unachievable for many people who so desperately need it. We would be ripping away the best chance that many people have at recovery, at building healthy, meaningful lives. Suboxone is good, it is effective under certain circumstances, but not as a blanket cure. As provider and champion of harm reduction, the Maine Harm Reduction Alliance can speak readily to the prevalence and consequences of drug use. With methadone unattainable, many who currently rely on this lifesaving medication will relapse. Many who may benefit from methadone in the future will not have the opportunity to do so. Drug use will increase, and as such, so will overdose deaths, prevalence of hepatitis C, and HIV. Over 2013, the Alliance provided roughly 1,000 hepatitis C tests among persons who inject drugs. Of these, roughly four in 10 were positive for hepatitis C antibodies. Studies show that the longer a person is using injection drugs, the more likely they are to contract Hep C. So if you think that the tab for methadone is high, try hepatitis C treatment, or worse, end-stage liver failure and liver transplant. Further, according to the recent statistics, the state of Maine uses one person every other day to a drug overdose. This represents an increase of 150% since the turn of the century. Today, more Mainers die of a drug overdose than in car accidents. The costs of drug-related mortality far outstrip the costs of covering methadone. According to the Maine Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, drug-related mortality in Maine cost $168.7 million in 2010 alone. This included the cost of accidental poisoning or drug overdose and cirrhosis and liver damage or hepatitis C. So in closing, I ask not how the state can afford to fund methadone, but how, how can it not? How can it deny Jenny the chance to change her life? How can it deny her daughter the opportunity to have a mom? To change lives, to save lives, I urge you to oppose the cuts to methadone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Ken Chaney and then Jennifer Lindhor and Deborah Taylor and Stephanie Lohman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Senator Hamper, Senator Brackey, Representative, Representative Rotundo, Representative Gutten, distinguished members of the Appropriations and Financial Affairs, and the Health and Human Services Joint Standing Committees. My name is Amit Kichini, I live in Walthall, and it's both a privilege and honor to give testimony in support of methadone maintenance, treatment, and successful and cost-effective value in the treatment of heroin and opioid addiction. It has been, and it continues to be, despite some of the testimony that we've heard today, the gold standard for treating acute and chronic opioid addiction. I stand before you today as a successful and retired entrepreneur, I was urged to say myself a multimillionaire, and that will come in afterwards, a chairman of a public company, and is an advocate that has worked for 35 years to increase awareness of addiction as a chronic, often relapsing brain disease that has to be treated with the same quality and scientifically-based care as any other chronic disease. I'm also a board member of Faces and Voices of Recovery, and a member of Patrick Kennedy's One Mind Initiative. As a member of the ACM External Review Committee, I recently was tasked to evaluate the National Practice Guidelines for Medication for Treatment of Opioid Use Disorders. So this is actually very apropos that I'm here today, because I'm hearing a lot of things that conflict with what ACM recommends. I am a father and a grandfather, and the recipient of the President's Lifetime Achievement Award for Addiction and Child Welfare Advocacy, as well as a Congressional Award of a recipient for my work with addiction. I became a hardcore homeless heroin addict at the age of 15, and spent 13 years on high-dose methadone in Boston. While on methadone, I earned my GED, graduated from Boston University, soli cum laude, Phi Beta Kappa, was the Director of Research for the City of Boston Drug Treatment Program, served as the Acting Director for the largest methadone program in Boston, and was a published member of the National Institute of Drug Abuse's Community Hepatological Award. I have been in abstinence, face recovery for over 33 years, that means I'm still sober, and had I not been on methadone, I could have, I would have, would never have reached my 25th birthday. It treated my addiction, it stabilized my life, it gave me the time for my prefrontal cortex to stabilize so that I could make correct decisions about my life choices. Otherwise, I would have been dead. Addiction is a chronic disease, it's not a criminal or moral issue. It is a healthcare issue, plain and simple. This proposal is analogous to introducing a bill that eliminates reimbursement for insulin or hypertension, as I urge the legislative members today to carefully consider the ramifications of passing this bill. If it passes, lives will be lost or destroyed by overdose and incarceration, families will be ripped apart, the incidence of HIV, Hep D, Hep C will, emergency room mentions, et cetera, for overdose, criminal justice costs will increase, and the economic healthcare burden will rise dramatically. This is a pay-down, a pay-later situation, where the cost of failing to treat the disease exceeds the cost of treatment by a ratio nationally of 12 to 1. That means for every dollar we put, don't put in the treatment, we spend $12 shoveling up a mess afterwards. Opioid addiction is similar to type 1 diabetes, there's type 1 and type 2, both diseases both require medication-assisted treatment. The addiction treatments industry is primarily oriented around the abstinence model, which is outdated for just total. It's a wonderful model, but it doesn't fit for all. And 85% of opioid addicts without opioid substitution treatment while their addiction will relapse within 30 days. That means you pay $30,000 for 30 days, day 31, it's like buying a car. Day 31, the car dies. And so it's, it's basically ineffective. Passing this will be a death sentence for men. You have the power to influence policy that will save lives, families, probably even.
Thank you very much. Representative Johnson, Representative Gutten.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chaney. Can you tell me, you were saying the abstinence model doesn't work for everybody, or it's somehow considered outdated? What does that mean? Does that mean abstinence just, that just cold turkey, stopping?
Yeah, abstinence model is basically, you go into treatment, you have the 12-step recovery model, and you're usually detoxified before most of the inpatient drug treatment programs, although there are some that provide that service also. And then basically, you're given a big book, counseling, et cetera, and after 30 days or whatever, you go out, some of the programs are 90 days, and you're discharged into the community, and that's it. And the problem is, is that your brain once was a cucumber, and it's turned into a pickle, and it takes time to rewire your brain. Opioid addiction is different than alcoholism, it affects the endo-opioid receptor, it has a different interaction with your dopamine receptors in your brain, et cetera. And so you can't, one size, the doctor back there previously said all the antibiotics aren't the same, one's good for strep, one's good for stat, give them the wrong one, and it's not going to work. And it's the same in addiction treatment, too. So today, what we're trying to do is embrace the many paths, okay, and, and really tear down the silos, so that each treatment modality basically recognize the value of the other treatment modality. But I'm not saying one step fits all.
No, I don't think that that can be clarified, it's between them, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Grant?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for your testimony. I, because you have this national perspective, having evaluated the National Practice Guide Line, that caught my eye. I have no expertise in this area, as I've stated before. Is there some kind of national movement or, or some kind of a serious problem with methadone that is, is causing folks to rethink using it? I mean, why, why would we be talking about going in this direction? Is there any clinical or historical reason in doing so?
I think initially, it was a supply and demand. Suboxone is a schedule-free substance, and as such, although you need to get a DEA, a special DEA number to practice it, and you can do 30 for the first year and then up to 100 afterwards, and there's some legislation actually pending in Washington where you can expand your practice to 250. The bottom line is, it works for certain types of addiction, and they wanted people that are opioids to be able to have that, and it was less restrictive. You didn't have to go to the clinic every day. Many states don't have any take-home policies. Suboxone also has a 10 times higher diversion rate on the street, and this is a published statistic, than methadone does, okay? You can die from either one, yes, methadone is more potentially lethal, but you're also dealing with a much harder core addict who's more schooled in it. So you generally don't find that people on methadone programs overdosing and dying, because they, it's like they've been to graduate school, the other guy's just still in high school, okay? And suboxone is sort of a high school drug, is good for prescription opioids, but for Maine especially, you have all the heroin coming up from New York and Boston, you're starting to see the overdoses. The whole complexion of the opioid addiction community will be changing, and is changing as we're speaking here right now, over the next five years. So what may have worked for your kids who are robbing pills out of the cabinet, and fishermen who hurt their lower backs and with the oxycontin, this is not going to work with heroin addicts. Heroin, I mean, methadone maintenance is the gold standard for hardcore heroin addiction. And it would really be, you would be basically, it would be wanton disregard, okay, not to understand that and to cut funding. You would literally be sending people to their death.
Representative?
Thank you. You may have crossed paths at Boston City Hospital at some point.
Maybe.
I did my neurology residency.
I was banned from Boston City Hospital, blacklisted.
Oh, that's what I mean, I got it.
But then I worked there afterwards, and we got the windows on that night.
Yeah, I promised, yeah.
I worked for David Rosenblatt.
Oh, terrific, that's true. So thank you for, for bringing us the idea so steadfastly that addiction is a brain disorder. And, you know, one person can take a Percocet for dental pain and be addicted for life and move on to heroin, and another one can say, well, that was good, I, my pain's gone, and put it away on a shelf, and that's the end of it. So it's a brain disorder, and I appreciate your bringing that up.
There's one other thing I really would like to say, if I can draw your patience, is, there is, there's a new thing, well, it's not new, but it's new to the most people that read, it's called epigenetics. And what that really speaks to is the effect of the environment, child adverse experience, and how that turns on and off their RNA in their brain, and predisposes them to addictive behavior. Kids who come from untreated addiction or alcoholism-impacted families have 192% higher rate of becoming intravenous drug users later on in life. So if we don't provide, and this is, this is documented, I'm numbering these numbers out of my apple orchard, these numbers are documented numbers. And so not only by not treating them today are we sentencing these people either to jails, institutions, or death, but we also are doing that to their families and the children. And so I ask the committee to really understand that there are many paths and we need to address each individual, evaluate each individual, the severity of their addiction, separate before we just say one-size-fits-all. Because ladies and gentlemen, as somebody who was a hardcore street heroin addict who spent 13 years on methadone and has 34 years in recovery, that ain't so. Thank you.
And there actually are a couple other people who want to ask questions. And I apologize for having to be the disciplinarian.
Oh, it's okay.
But I just want to remind committee members as well as people in the audience, we have over 35 people who still want to testify. It's after 4 o'clock. And you know, if I push a lot, it's because we want to be able to hear from everybody who's made the time to come today. It's not directed toward anyone. We're delighted you're here. And I just feel like the conversation could probably continue with you all afternoon.
That's good. And it takes weeks.
So I'm going to call Representative Hammer now and then Representative Brucey and then maybe we can move on.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is short, so it's probably easy to answer. It sounds like what you're telling me is, what you're explaining is that it would increase, likely increase the rate of drug-affected babies in the state of Maine if this proposal were to go forward. And if not, drug-affected babies in the state would be harmed.
I'm not necessarily speaking to the drug-affected babies. So whether they're on methadone or whether they're shooting heroin in the street, the bottom line is the mother, the baby will be born drug-affected. Okay? That's not the issue. The issue is the year, especially the early years of development, when the child's brain is wired. If, I don't know whether you've ever been inside a active heroin addict and the baby's in the bathroom and mom's out there because she's a prostitute, dad's holding the baby in the bathroom, that's not a healthy environment for a child to grow up. And so as a result, and I'm not dramatizing that. I've seen all of that and much more. And so what I am saying is that it does have a negative impact, the environment. And there are plenty of studies. I'd refer you to Lee Robbins or whatever. Or I have a big website. It's called Trooper's Guide with about 400,000 pages of addiction research in every treatment program in the U.S. and abroad.
Representative Brucey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question, you said that people who are addicted to heroin need methadone. But does that mean that if you're addicted to opioids, I mean like oxycodone, does suboxone work for that? Or do you need...
Yes, I'm not saying that suboxone won't work for people that are early on in heroin. But it depends upon the severity of the addiction. There's generally a progression. As you can see, when they closed the pill mills in Florida that supplied 85% of the nation's supply, all of a sudden you started N because we were so successfully guarding the opium crops in Taliban over in Afghanistan. All of a sudden, we saw this increase in heroin coming up. Heroin is the catalyst, okay? Oxycodone, oxycontin or oxycodone, that's like a Volkswagen jet, okay? So there's a natural progression as the disease progresses because it is a progressive disease because it changes the cellular composition in your brain.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chaney, for bringing this today.
You're most welcome. Thank you all.
And I just want to remind committee members, too, that there'll be lots more opportunity in work sessions to ask questions and to be digging for more information. Ms. Minnoff?